We have a call. We begin this meeting with a pledge.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is just a reminder, the rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public. Meeting the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the new necessary business to govern the town. Our questions and comments are to be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment on any single person, on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted on the Town Hall and are available for anyone to review. Thank you. Introduction, please.
So at this point, board members present, we have Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort, and Perry Brown. And I'm Kristin Powers, and there is a sign-in sheet at the front table. If everybody could just take a moment to sign in there if you haven't already. And a friendly reminder, so all comments and questions are directed to the chair, and please be sure to introduce yourself before you speak this evening. Additions or deletions? There are no deletions tonight. We do have an addition under older unfinished business to discuss the pedestrian accessibility grant. And then within the reports, there are a couple of line items that we can carry, you know, discuss within the report section. And then under new business, which we had began to discuss last time, is regarding the personnel policy and our overtime procedure. So we do have a full meeting tonight, so just...
Approval of meetings from the previous, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Which are from October 31st.
I think they looked fine. I move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Any announcements?
No announcements.
Zoning administrator? Nancy?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Nancy.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay. Permits issued to date were at 37. Our wide format printer is scheduled to arrive tomorrow. It will be installed in the assessor's office so that we can better supervise its use. And finally, we do have some activity on the trailer issue over in West Pollet. An eviction order has been placed. We're waiting for that to be executed. There's a, I believe, 45-day waiting period before we will know what fines are awarded to us. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Nancy? Thank you very much, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Standing commission?
Not this meeting.
Not this meeting, okay. Road foreman's report.
So, um, a couple of things. So Colby Generous has joined the Highway Department as of Monday, and so excited about that. All is going well there. Colby and Rick have been working together to get acclimated and introduce Colby to the town and just show him around. The 2023 MAC is undergoing fabrication improvements, so continuing to monitor that. In addition to that, the rest of the fleet is in the process of going through just general upkeep, and we're getting all of the trucks inspected and making sure that they're up safe and up to snuff. The Highway Team members have begun hauling winter aggregate. Sign replacement inventory is ongoing, and it's moving at the pace that it's moving because there's a heavy focus on making sure that all of the signs are installed in a compliant fashion. There have already been signs that have been installed that have come up missing, so just friendly request and reminder to the citizens of Pollet to please not steal road signs. Upcoming projects include guard rail assessment. So there's going to be somebody coming who specializes in guard rails, who will be just taking a look at what we currently have and seeing what, which need to be replaced. And then the board will have an estimate for what it'll take to replace those for the next meeting. Continuing to haul winter material and prepping the fleet for winter maintenance. And another item which just came through, so the town received the Small Highway Safety Improvement Grant that we applied for, for the intersection of North Pollet Road and Route 30. So this is the award amount that we got, which we were selected out of 43 applicants. And the award that we got was for $14,440, and that's a 100% state share, which means there's no match. So if the board, thanks, if the board is supportive of that, I'll continue to move along with seeing what we need to do to execute that grant agreement because part of that is, a large part of that is going to be tree removal. There are some really, really large locust trees that are interfering with the visibility rate on that bend. And so I've already talked to a local tree person when we were gathering the information for that grant, and they had indicated that wintertime would be a great time to do that. So with the board's blessing, I'll continue moving ahead with that.
I think it's great that we got that.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept this grant.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Great, thank you guys for working hard on that.
Yeah, quick question on that, Kristin. What else were you applying for with that besides the tree removal? Is there going to be some more painting of stripes?
Yeah, so in addition, so there is going to be more signage, so indicating that there's a stop ahead and indicating the speed limit, because that's part of the issue there. The state has already put in that two-way arrow there across from the intersection, and they've also reinstalled the stop signs on either side.
Those are helpful.
Which are super helpful. There's going to be what they call fog lines, or reinstating the fog lines at that intersection, which are just brighter, wider lines, kind of what happened here at the School Street and Route 30 intersection. And then we also budgeted for stop ahead to be painted on the road. So, pretty robust. So hopefully, I mean, I think that the stop signs and arrows have already been a really big help, but hopefully with all of that, it will really be effective in amping up the safety of that intersection, so...
That's great.
Yeah, so part of that is, you know, work that needs to be done by our town crew. So like the painting of the stop ahead and everything like that is meant to be at least maintained by the town crew, but we did get a pretty robust award, which is great. So we have to keep a really careful watch on what we spend. But perhaps we could figure out contracting with somebody else to be able to at least get the initial painting done, and then we could maintain it, so... Ongoing, that's ongoing.
Frank?
Would there be enough money for its own electric sign there?
That wasn't part of it, no. We currently have the, if I may, we currently have the radar speed sign right before that intersection that says stop ahead, and then the two stop signs there. But I don't think there's any, I don't, we hadn't budgeted, and that wasn't part of the offering for the grant.
So we have four, two electric signs, and one there. Where are the other three now?
There's one on Kelly Hill, there's one on North Pol, or sorry, on Pollet Rupert Mountain, and I believe there's one somewhere else in West Pollet. I haven't...
Dave knows where it is.
By the town garage, town garage.
And there's one sitting at the town garage, so...
Needed new batteries, right?
We got the new batteries. I think it just needs to be replaced. And I think that, or I would hope in my heart that everybody can understand, we've been operating with a one-person highway department for a while, so that hasn't been the top priority, but now that we're gaining on having people. But that's not, if I may, that's not part of this, and maybe we can talk about that later. But the last item too, under the Highway Department, is the winter op, oh shoot, that's, I left that in my car, but that's the winter operations policy that we talked about last time? Does anybody mind if I run out and grab that real quick? I retyped it.
Okay.
I can run and grab it.
Yep, that would be great.
In the meantime, is there something in the budget for an additional one or two for the speed signs?
At this point, no, we didn't put anything in the budget for any more speed signs.
I think the idea is that one at one end of Pollet Village and one at the other, and the same with West Pollet.
We didn't intend them to be permanent, Frank. We intend to keep moving them around to enlighten people on their speeds, that they're doing at different times. If they're constantly, they're just like, I don't think they're going to do any good.
And just FYI, the reason why they're not on Highway 30 anymore is because V-Trans told us to take them down because we didn't have a permit. So we are in the process of getting a permit with V-Trans to put them back up on Highway 30 because they were very helpful there.
They found every reason for us not to have them up, but didn't really want to be helpful in getting them up. So we'll do our own thing, and eventually we'll get them back up on Route 30 and try to slow traffic down there through town.
So, sorry about that, but I retyped the winter maintenance operation policy, which you all took a look at at the last meeting. And so I just, the edits that I made was changing the word from "sand" to "stone aggregate slash sand." And then I made one edit, I wrote the Medowee Valley School, but it's the Medowee Community School, so that's for you all to take a look at.
It's just my own little nitpick, but I'm so glad you removed the random quotes at the end.
Yes, I didn't realize why "please drive carefully" was in quotes. It is still in all caps, but I did take the quotes out. Tried to do a little bit of grammatic, you know, grammatical editing.
Everybody had a chance to look that over?
Looks good to me.
Okay. How do we feel, in form of a motion to adopt this?
Sure, I'll move that we adopt this winter maintenance operation policy.
Second it. Any more discussion on the winter maintenance policy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Is that it for the road crew?
Yes, the only, yeah, yes.
Anybody have any questions for the Highway Department? Assessors?
Nothing that I'm aware of, nope.
Town clerk's memo?
I think Deb is here. Deb, do you want to review yours, or would you like for me to?
Um, there's really not much on there. I don't really have anything to add.
Okay.
It's just like the Act 250 thing is a FYI, a notification from the town.
Yeah, I did see that, thank you.
Pass those along.
I think I did see this. It must have gotten emailed.
Oh, I gave him one.
Oh, you gave him one already? I guess we had a spare.
Okay.
I think also Mike might have received an email with the Act 250 thing.
Yes, this jurisdictional opinion, okay.
This may be one of the first Act 250 things that has come through since we officially became a 10-acre town. And that's why they are not subject to their jurisdiction.
Okay, because it's on a smaller plot.
Yeah, it's on a smaller plot.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have any questions for Deb? I guess not. Thank you for joining us tonight, Deb. Julie.
We got just the two warrant, and we received the fourth order of last state aid payment for Highway. And I think that was all I've got on there.
So the payroll warrant for tonight is 24023 for $9,431.93, and accounts payable warrant for 24024 for $30,402.2.
I hear a motion.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Barely.
What about now?
Still barely.
Okay, hold on, uh...
I was hearing everybody really good. Deb, it's the same here. This is Nancy. I can't hear anything coming from the meeting. Yeah, and it was okay, wasn't it?
Let's see.
Is the light still on?
Yeah, uh... Output, input. So we're at max? We're at max audio. How is it now?
That's better.
Okay. He'll try to speak, he'll try to project. Okay.
Owl dies, what happens?
There goes the Zoom option for the meetings with the owl dies. So there is a, how about the warrants?
Oh, yes, I'll move that we approve those two warrants, 24023 and 24024.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Julie. Does Bob have anything from Emergency Management?
Not that I saw.
Not that you saw, okay. Jennifer, do you have anything to add as a health officer tonight? She was there, right? Is she still there?
Nope, no Jennifer, so nothing.
All right, so I guess just that update on the trailer situation. Waste water treatment, nothing? I did touch base with Jill, and Julie sent her all the butters, I think. She thought she had all the information she needed as far as filling out those reports that she has to have due by the end of the year. And so I just had to let her know, let us know if there was anything else that she needed. And other than that, I haven't heard of any, anything going on, any problems or issues. Facilities report.
Um, the last meeting, there was a discussion of a contractor for the library.
Slate roof?
Yes.
Did you end up touching base with Dave or not?
Armstrong, yes, I did. There was somebody at the library all day today, but I didn't have a chance to talk to the librarian who was there to find out, but I saw a truck with ladders, but I didn't check in.
Yeah, I know he was, he was just going to go up. He was quizzing me a little bit about what particular area we were having the issues with, and I said unfortunately I didn't know, so...
I was talking to him and described it, but I thought he was going to contact me when he finally had room on his cell phone.
Yeah, I don't know, he just started a job at Telescope there, so he may not be able to get here for a few days or something. I'm not sure how that all, how his schedule is working out, when he'll have some people be able to do that. But he said that he needed to... Okay, so he, okay. Sue?
Uh, would he have had a ladder? Oh, okay, sorry, that was, sorry, excuse me.
He said, he said he did need to get back in touch with you to get a little bit more pinpoint to areas, so...
I will keep on him.
Anything else on facilities?
Oh, I just want to announce that this Friday, the 17th, we're getting, the Energy Auditor is coming through. This is for that program, which is delightfully called MERP, Municipal Energy Resilience Program. And we're having at nine o'clock, someone's going to be, the contractor's going to be doing an audit in the library, and then at 11 o'clock here in Town Hall. And I thank Adele and Julie, who both have volunteered to open up the buildings and show the contractor around. And hopefully this Energy Audit will qualify us for significant grant money for weatherization and energy upgrades, so... We are a town that is, there's a list of towns that are especially energy burdened, and we are on that list, so we should get priority.
Excellent. PEG TV equipment, so...
Yes, so Tom from PEG TV reached out to the board. Let me go back to that email so that I'm, that was... Do you remember, Mike, when that was sent?
It was since the last meeting, though.
Yeah.
Sorry. Well, I can't find it, but in essence, PEG TV is excited to offer the town of Pollet the opportunity to have some permanent video equipment installed. So like what is often here with the several cameras and the whole control board. So the offer is that at no cost to the town, the PEG TV would permanently install...
I found the email, yes. Let's see, so it says, "I would like to include an upgrade to Pollet's town office in my 2024 capital budget proposal. If approved, it would be at no expense to Pollet. The upgrade would be a permanent installation and would require the select board's approval. PEG TV has made similar upgrades to our own studios. If any member would like to have a closer look, we are located in Building 24 at the Howe Center, One Scale Avenue, Rutland. A small amount of space would be needed for our control panel and possibly an audio mixer box. The cameras would be mounted to the walls in convenient locations. We could also have a preview monitor installed if the board would prefer it. The monitor would allow you to see who is on camera at any given time and can also be useful when giving PowerPoint presentations. The town would also be welcome to use the equipment to record any other meetings if needed. PEG TV has been using key code media out of Concord, New Hampshire for Town Hall installs. The crew typically makes an initial visit prior to submitting a proposal and quote to PEG TV. I'm available at your convenience. If you have any questions, the installation would make our coverage of your meetings much more streamlined as our tech would not have to transport or set up, take down, equipment regularly. Let me know your thoughts. Best, Tom, Executive Director, PEG TV."
So, how does everybody feel about just having this equipment permanently installed? And it seems like a good, good deal all the way around. It's, it would be valuable, the TV screen could be used by us for other functions also.
It's at no cost to us. I don't see any downside.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure, right. That is in the form of a motion. I move that we accept this offer from PEG TV.
Do you have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any more discussion about having, having PEG TV permanently install all these items and... Yes?
My only question would be that we already have this, the television, so, you know, perhaps we could relocate this to upstairs, or it would be interesting to find out a little bit more. I think that the cameras and the mixer board would be quite convenient. I'm not sure if there's, you know, it sounds like, it sounded like the TV screen is an option, so...
And I'm curious how, how it would integrate with the Zoom system and stuff like that, too.
I'm sure, I'm sure we can talk to them about that.
Right.
And it sounds like this is just, you know, they're working to put this into their budget request, so it's not a guarantee.
They'd have a representative come and evaluate, and we could work through the process. They need to, they need to get approval budgetarily, approval, so...
Yes.
Frank?
If they subscribe it for free, then that gives you a second backup TV.
Right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. So we'll just need to make sure that Tom gets a copy of the minutes, I guess, or...
Yeah, I'll contact Tom.
Okay, thank you very much. Medowee Valley School Board, is there any report? Pedestrian Accessibility Grant update.
All right, let me, that's me, let me share my screen here. Okay, that was interesting. So the, the update is that I've been working with Stephanie Bork from Rutland Regional Planning Commission on this pedestrian accessibility grant that we got. Then we are in the process of trying to hire a firm to do the design. So we had budgeted, and I sent this information in the email around to you folks earlier. We had budgeted in the grant 87,500 for the, for the design work. And we got a quote back, the way that this works, we were doing the, what's it called? At the ready with, with V-Trans approved, the at the ready bid process. So we had number one, two, and three of the firms that we'd chosen, and we have to negotiate with Firm One, and then if we don't like it, we can move on to Firm Two. So Firm One, VHB, got back to us, and they came in at significantly above our, above what we had budgeted. Here's their, move this out of the way. So here's, I'm just going to quickly go through part of their proposal that they made to us. This is what the project would consist of. Now, this is basically what the project is going to have to consist of, no matter who we work with. There's going to be a project kickoff, that's number one. Number two is that they have to compile available information, including topographic survey and base mapping. The other thing they're going to have to do, and this is where it starts to get pricey, is bridge investigations. Because you may remember when that scoping study was done, no one could quite figure out what the load is on the bridge. There's not information. So they're going to have to do a study, like take a little material sample from the bridge to find, and do a study to find out what its load is. So that, after they do that, they have to have a local concerns meeting and alternatives presentation. Now, this bit, we already did with Foston O'Neil, but V-Trans is making us do it again. Then they make conceptual plans, and then they do a bunch of CE documentation, which is natural resource identification. There is an archaeological bit in here, I'm just scrolling quickly through this. Archaeological survey. Archaeological survey, then they do the permitting, and then once they've done that, they do the EPA review, NEPA review. Then they make the preliminary plans. This is where they actually do the design work. After they've done the prelim, it has this whole list of what they're gonna do. After they've done the design work, they do the right-of-way plans and acquisition process. They do the final plan development, and then after that, they will help us with bids and construction services a little bit. So, that's what they are offering to us. Now, let me get down to how much, here's what the schedule would be. This seems to me like a long time, but Stephanie assured me this is how these projects work. So, if it kicked off in fall of 2023, we would not be building till summer of '27. That, so that's the, the way that this process moves. She says that's normal. It seemed, like I said, it seemed like a long time to me. Let me get down to their budget here, and I can show you what our problem is. Here's the budget. So, they come in at $128, $137. No, I see. Well, on that screen, it's covered, but they come in at $128, $137 for their project grand total, which is about $40,000, no, about, about $30,000 above what we, what we had budgeted. Now, in the, the way this process works, we don't tell them what we budgeted. We ask them to make a bid, and they make a bid. So, um, let me see if I can share the other screen. So, Stephanie and I got with the people from VHB, and we tried to bring this down. Switching, it has not. Okay. Hang on. There we go. Okay. So, they had a couple suggestions for how we could bring this down, and I'll just read off for you. There are three, there are four ways that we could help resolve this money situation. And if we decide as a Board that we can't resolve this money situation, we can move on to a different contractor. One is they could remove the bridge load rating from the contract and explore alternative treatments over the bridge to still provide a separated pedestrian route without adding a notable amount of dead load to the bridge. So, they're talking about maybe using bollards or something, right, over the bridge? That could save us up to $20,000 by not doing the bridge examination. Stephanie and I talked about it, and we thought that was a potentially reasonable way that we could take down the cost. The second one is exploring options where the Town would handle the public presentations and present the scoping study documents. That could save us about $8,000. Stephanie and I, we're not sure that the Town could handle this, because these new documents, it's not gonna be just retreading the old stuff. This is gonna be looking at different specific options for the design. So, that might not be something the Town could really handle. This third one here, they said they've been able to go from conceptual plans to NEPA permitting and right-of-way and skip the preliminary submissions. That could save us $10,000. V-Trans will not let us do that. They insist that we go through all the steps, so that one's dead on arrival. And then the fourth thing here, they say, is anticipating our current funds being lower than those reductions. They would recommend proceeding with the work up to the right-of-way task, and during right-of-way procurement, we could look for additional funds that V-Trans might help us find. So, that's where we're at with this. I admit that Stephanie and I are a little frustrated in our work with V-Trans, that they keep on not letting us scale back the way that we would like to scale back, but it is what it is. So, I'm curious about what the rest of the Board thinks about it. Stephanie doesn't think if we went to another firm that we would, so we have three potential firms. One of them is Fussin' O'Neil, who worked with us on the scoping study. Stephanie doesn't think that the other firm that is not Fussin' O'Neil would come back with a significantly different number than what VHB has come back with. She thinks maybe Fussin' O'Neil might, because they're the ones who drew up that initial number of $87,500. So, she suspects that if we said no to VHB, and we went and we gave it to Fussin' O'Neil, that if we asked for their bid, they might potentially come in a little closer to what we wanted, but they're also a smaller firm. VHB has a lot of people, and they would do everything in-house. They wouldn't have to farm anything out, whereas Fussin' O'Neil would have to farm out some of the things to subcontractors, so it might take even longer than 2027. So, that's, that's my report, and I would like to know what, what the Board wants and how we should move ahead on this.
Harley?
Is Fussin' O'Neil number two on the list of three?
They are number three. We might be able to go to them anyhow.
Directly?
Yeah. But we would have to find out if we can. Otherwise, we'd have to negotiate with the second one as well. But number two and three were like this close in our ranking as to make almost no difference, so Stephanie thinks we might be able to just go to Fussin' O'Neil, 'cause time is a ticking.
Frank?
And these firms were already pre-approved by V-Trans, who's worked with them for-
Yes. Yep, that's why we went with their list of pre-approved firms.
Correct.
So, what was the plan to put across the bridge? Why are we building on the bridge? To create more work for us? Is V-Trans gonna maintain that sidewalk if it goes across that bridge?
No, V-Trans is not going to maintain the sidewalk. The idea, there was a scoping study done about two years ago now, and there were numerous meetings with the company Fussin' O'Neil who did it, and the concept was to put in sidewalks and crosswalks in the Village Center, including on both sides of the bridge and a number of other places, going up 133 toward the church, so to get to the church parking lot. And the one that the Town ended up approving to work on first did include sidewalks across the bridge. The idea being, I think that if we narrowed the roadway a little, that traffic will slow down, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I would be fine with ditching the sidewalks across the bridge and just doing bollards or something if we had to. To me, the most important part is the crosswalks, personally. I think the crosswalks are vital.
Frank?
If you went, you went to the, who gave you your initial price, is this a substantial difference? Can you go any direction? Don't you have both bids?
Nope. This first bid, we have to either say yes, or we have to say no. If we say yes, we go with the first bid. If we say no, we cannot return to the first bid. This is how the process, this particular bid process works. That's why it's important for us to know what we're doing and make a decision.
So, it seems very evident that to go, to have any kind of crossing on the bridge is gonna be add a great deal of money to this project.
Yes.
So.
However, I'm not sure that V-Trans is going to let us not put a crossing on the bridge, since we wrote that in the grant.
Why would they?
Yep.
They won't let us put things on there, why don't they?
Simple question, what's a bollard?
Um, it's like, you know, those like cement things that stick up so that pedestrians don't, that cars don't come through to where pedestrians are.
Concrete cone.
Like a, a super heavy-duty guardrail, a single, a single pipe.
Just one?
Well, no, they would put a series of them.
So that people could cross safely and not get hit by trucks on the curb.
Go between cars if they wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay. Julie?
I don't remember what the end date was on the grant, but I don't think it was '27.
Stephanie and I will have to talk about that, but she seemed to think this was within the bounds of what is normal, so, like I said, I was surprised, she was not. She's working with, she's at Rutland Regional Planning Commission. She's working with a lot of other towns on similar projects. She says that the, as far as like the hourly rates and everything that this firm, VHB, returned to us, it's not outside the ordinary. They're not stiffing us. It's just that examining the bridge is gonna cost a lot of money, and that doing these extra meetings that V-Trans wants us to do is gonna cost more than we anticipated.
Frank?
Isn't the bridge the Route 3 bridge?
Yes.
Doesn't V-Trans have control of that bridge anyways, and should be, know the reliability of the bridge on them, not on this project?
If V-Trans knew the reliability of the bridge, that would have been discovered in the previous scoping study, so they don't. Or at least, they don't have the detail that would be needed to build sidewalks on it. I know, this is, this is not, this is very complicated. And I don't really have a strong leaning toward either. My thought is, if we do go with VHB, I would suggest that we ask them to not examine the bridge, right, and figure something else to do with the crossing over the bridge that doesn't involve putting a heavy sidewalk on it. That would save us $20,000. We'd still be about $13,000 above what we budgeted. Yeah. But if we do decide to not go with them, we might be able to come in closer to the regular cost with Fussin' O'Neil, who we did work with before.
And we, yeah, we can't even know what their number is.
No, we can't. That's, that's, that's the tricky part.
It's not like they're all sealed bids, it's-
Nope. We could have done a sealed bids process, but it would have been more work for us.
Right.
'Cause we would have had to vet all the qualifications of the people, instead of having V-Trans have already vetted them.
So, I'm, I'm in favor of not, not sniffing around and figuring out what the bridge is, doing any of that engineering work. So, I guess still the option to that. We can't, we can't just say, never mind, we don't wanna have a, we don't wanna cross here. We, we're not sure if that will fly with V-Trans.
Yeah, we're not sure. I mean, if it would, because part of the, part of the goal of the project was to make safe pedestrian crossing over to the post office, right? And so, if there's no safe pedestrian passage along the bridge, that kinda defeats that purpose.
Why don't we just build right up to the bridge and then carry on after the bridge, and the state will feel kinda stupid for not putting sidewalk on a bridge that they built?
Well, here's, here's, here's-
Put a sidewalk on it.
Here's part of my thought. If we do go with this firm, VHB, who, they're really qualified. I mean, that's the nice thing about them, is that they've, they're multi-state, they're, they're in several states in the Northeast. They have, but they do have, they do have offices in Vermont, and they have, in this, in this, they list all the people who would be doing the work. They have like dozens, if not 100 employees. It's, it's a lot. So, they would be able to get everything done. My thought was that if we ask them not to investigate the bridge, and we save money that way, we're still a little over budget, but when we get to the build, if we get to the build and we don't have money to put the sidewalk on the bridge, maybe we just don't, that bops it. Maybe we just build as much as we have money for, you know? And we prioritize the things that we most need to build, which is really these crosswalks and the, and I think the sidewalk up to the parking lot by the church is important. But that would be something I think might work. Again, V-Trans is the big, you know, elephant in the room.
Frank?
Can you give the engineering firm a hint as to what your target is on this, so that they might be able to pare it down?
They, that, that's what we already have done. We, we let them know that they were significantly above our budget, and that's why they gave this list that I'm projecting right now of several different ways they thought they could pare it down. So, Stephanie met with a person from VHB. They sat down, and they came up with these multiple ways to pare it down, of which really only one of them is probably gonna fly. Yeah.
Do we need to make this decision tonight, or probably, or?
It would be good if we could make this decision tonight, so that we can continue. If we have to contact another firm, we, it's gonna take some time for them to draw up the proposal, right? If we don't feel comfortable making the decision tonight, and we do need two more weeks to think on it, we could take that. It's just the, any time that we spend deliberating does continue to slow down the project.
Harley?
Fussin' O'Neil, is that a Vermont company?
Um, yes.
And it's not a mom-and-pop operation, though, right?
No.
There's engineers and, and they're pre-approved with the-
They are pre-approved with V-Trans, and we did work with them on the scoping study. No, they, they are, and Stephanie and I did a process of using, using a fairly detailed little rubric to score these three firms, and VHB scored significantly higher than the other ones, just because, just because they do so much in-house. So, they have their own like archaeology people, they have their own people who interface with, who would do the bridge investigations and stuff, and they just have, they have so many qualified people that it wouldn't be a situation where if the one person in the firm who's qualified is out for a little while, this whole thing is slowed down. So, but again, it's not that Fussin' O'Neil is not qualified. They definitely are. They're just a slightly smaller firm and may work a little more slowly.
Frank?
I mean, we're just talking about some crosswalks and some sidewalks, right? So, is, that's not really a really big project for this firm, either one of the firm, any of the firms you're talking about. They do some fairly expansive stuff. So, I'm wondering if, if that weighs in on, on this, if it all, the simplicity of it, how can they screw it up, really?
It's, it is simple, but other projects that Stephanie is working with other towns on are things like sidewalk replacements, and those are even more simple, because they don't have to do all of the, you know, assessments beforehand. The sidewalks are already there, they just have to design the replacements. So, this is actually a slightly more complicated project than some other ones she's working with other towns on. But again, it's not as big as some of the projects, when you look at their portfolios of what they've done. Some of their projects for all these firms are quite large.
So, the option is, if we kick these guys to the curb, we have to pick from the rest of the-
We have to, we have to submit a proposal, we have, we have to put out our RFP to another firm, and Stephanie suggests that we try to put it out to Fussin' O'Neil, because they are the only other, they're the other firm that would be more likely to come back.
And the benefit that they would have is they have done the preliminary-
They did the scoping study.
So, there's some, some of that work that they wouldn't have to do again.
We hope.
Right.
And they, they also, they know their own number, which is kind of a little cheaty, but I mean, they wrote, they helped us write the grant for this that we're working on right now. So, they know how much we anticipate spending. That's-
So, they, they may be able to tailor it to that.
Yeah, they might tailor it, and, and they do know the project very well, because they did the preliminary scoping study. I'm kind of inclined to try to kick it to them, even if they're a little smaller and might take a little longer.
I think that's our best option, honestly. I, I don't really see, you know, even if we, if we pare that down, V-Trans may, may fight us on not doing that across the bridge, just because it's not part of the original project, and they wanna stick to that. So, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we take our, take a gamble and go with Fussin', try and get down to Fussin' O'Neil. Anybody else?
No, that's kinda what we gotta do.
Perry?
Yeah, let's go with them, see what they have to offer.
Let's, let's try to get to Fussin' O'Neil.
Okay. All right, then-
Does that need to be a vote, or do they consensus?
Probably, probably a vote would be good. So, I'll move that we reject this bid from VHB, and we submit our request for proposals to Fussin' O'Neil.
Okay. And second? About second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Thank you for that.
I know that was complicated and took a little longer than, but yeah.
But that's fine, that's what we needed to do, so.
Okay, thank you. That's taken care of. I will let them know.
Good presentation.
Good job. Good job.
Good job.
New business.
So for new business, we've got, um, there have been some, well, seeking clarification on the way our overtime policy is structured within our personnel policy. So now that we're rebuilding our highway department, there have just been some questions. So I've printed out a copy, just of three pages of the personnel policy for each of you. And the question is how we structure overtime. So I'm not sure if this is something that you, you know, we started to talk about it, I believe, at the last meeting. Not sure if we're ready to go into it tonight, but in essence, um, currently the way it's structured is that overtime is, overtime, the overtime rate is paid outside of the structured working daily hours. So in the wintertime, for example, the highway department is scheduled to work from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So any time worked outside of those hours is overtime. The way that the personnel policy is written, um, it talks about, it doesn't clearly define that. It basically says that overtime pay is calculated outside of a working period. So that, it just, it's lacking clarification. So I wanted to bring this to everybody's attention because there have been some questions from our employees. And I would request that the board take some time to review that. And I think that it would be of benefit for us to then clarify that in the personnel policy to avoid confusion and question moving forward. So the options again would be overtime once 40 hours are reached within a working week. Or for, you know, overtime as it is now, outside of the daily allotted work schedule. So wintertime, seven to three, and summertime, I'm not sure, six to six? I know it's four, or six to?
Four.
I know it's four.
Six to four.
Four 10-hour days, so.
Apparently it's going to be, because you put in a meal, there's a meals in here, unpaid meal, that wasn't.
Which that's how it's been. So this is how it's been. The only thing that's been adjusted in this since my time with the town, since 20, I'm not sure when, was just clarifying the compensatory time policy. Nothing was ever changed with meals. So, um, I recognize, this sort of has just come up again in question since Colby began on Monday. So I recognize it might be of benefit for you all to have some time to read this and digest it. And I could happily put it on the agenda for the next meeting, but I do feel that it deserves clarification. How do we feel about discussing it at the next meeting? Or would you like to discuss it tonight?
I think we need to take it over and leave it over.
Kind of come up with a few ideas on our own and then, then bring it back to the highways foreman's report at, at the next meeting. Everybody good with that?
That's fine.
Is there any other new business?
Not for me.
Okay. Public comment?
So just a friendly reminder for a public comment, so since we do have so many people, so it's the, the proceed, rules of procedure says two minutes. So just not to be a pest, but trying to make sure that we're thorough with that, so.
I have a quick one.
Okay, Frank?
With the Screen Actors Guild's labor strike over, are you guys getting a raise in pay from PEG TV?
Double, double their pay.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Um, Dr. McCher? So in Politt, we have a hard time getting and then keeping good things. And I want to say that our librarian, Lindsay Barnes, is one of the best things that's ever happened to the city of Politt, village. She like left a job in New York at the public library to come work. She's the most qualified librarian we've ever had and has worked tirelessly and had a huge beneficial effect on the library programming, the fundraising, the community, to the point where she was acknowledged officially by the Vermont Association of Libraries for her outstanding work and commitment and accomplishments. So that when she was very suddenly fired in an email with no prior warning, it came as kind of a shock to the community. Um, it doesn't look good. I, there's just a lack of transparency with what happened there. And it would be a catastrophic loss to the library and the community to lose the most qualified and able and passionate librarian we could ever hope to hire. And I would hate for Politt to lose out on that.
Thank you. I do understand that the library board and trustees are independent of the select board, so. Arton?
Yeah, I was on the library board, as you know, when the previous librarian quit. And we interviewed about seven candidates for librarian. Uh, I, I've got a copy of Lindsay's resume here, which I had at the time we were interviewing. And it's really astounding to have a town of this size, get a librarian with this kind of background. And then to have her dismissed in the manner that she was, I can't even begin to understand what motivated this. It's unheard of. It's, it's rude to, to dismiss someone by email after a meeting that she had not even attended with no explanation. I have not heard one word of explanation for why this happened. And as a user of the library, since she's been there, I can only say she seems to have been doing a great job. She fundraises, she's, she's gotten letters of commendation from the Vermont Library Association. And my question is, what the hell's going on here? I don't understand it.
Molly? Um, I think that Lindsay has done a awesome job in so many ways. However, I know Linda Welch, and she was dismissed as, like, just she was let go. She's the one that takes all the rare books from the library and sells them for the library. And because she gave some files that were open files to a board member, she was let go. I feel that there has to be an openness to the library. There are so many things that Lindsay does so well. She came from a big city library. This is a small town. And you have to accommodate everybody, even if you don't like them. That's how it is. I've been here forty some years. It is how it is. You work with everybody. And I haven't heard that she is able to do that.
Sue?
Um, actually, I'd like to defer, I'll go to Carol. This is a letter from Oceana Wilson, who is the Vermont Library Associate, a Library Association president. And it is addressed to Lindsay Barnes. Dear Lindsay, in my capacity as president of the Vermont Library Association, and on behalf of the VLA Executive Board, I am excited to inform you that we have chosen to recognize and celebrate your outstanding contributions to our community. It is with great pleasure that we extend an offer of a one-year complimentary membership to the Vermont Library Association, along with a free registration to the 2024 VLA conference. You have been selected as one of the remarkable librarians for small Vermont libraries who have made a significant impact within their communities. We were particularly impressed with the creativity and community focus in your seed library, tech time sessions, after-school nature club, and listings of community connections on your website. We believe that individuals like you who sustain and grow libraries with creativity and vision can greatly enrich the Vermont Library Association. We hope that this one-year complimentary membership and, and the opportunity to attend our upcoming conference will not only provide you with valuable connections among your colleagues and facilitate the establishment of new connections across libraries in our state. If you would like to participate, please let me know at your earliest convenience. However, if this is not an opportunity you would like at this time, please rest assured that we remain incredibly appreciative of the remarkable work you continue to do and the contribution you make to the Vermont library ecosystem. Thank you for your dedication and commitment to our shared vision. We look forward to your response and hopefully to the prospect of working with you in the near future. Sincerely, Oceana Wilson, Vermont Library Association. She's the dean of libraries at Bennington College.
Thank you. Sue?
Yeah, I have a letter, Sue report. I have a letter here from Lisa May, who lives in town and is our yoga instructor over at the library. She says, I'm writing in support of Lindsay Barnes to lend some insight into how positively Lindsay has assisted me this past year. I reached out to Lindsay in the Politt library last November with interest in starting a chair yoga class. Lindsay brainstormed some ideas and asked if I was open to teaching a mat class in addition to the chair yoga. Her knowledge in programming, creativity, and finding new ways to make things happen have led us to hosting two successful yoga classes this past year. She quickly hooked up flyers, digital posting, and started spreading the word. I was overjoyed to arrive for classes and find the room set up, not only in a space-efficient way, but she had arranged creative lighting to set the mood for the class. She devised a system for individuals to check in, as well as a way for them to track payments easily. Having worked in many fitness clubs and yoga centers, I can speak firsthand at how important this organization is. I'm so grateful for Lindsay and her knowledge and skills, as well as her ability to think creatively. One of the aspects of these classes that Lindsay and I discussed is creating a sense of welcoming to the community. Phrase I often use in classes, based on the priorities that Lindsay, Lindsay and I discussed. It's been a privilege to witness participants' growth in these classes, not only in their increasing love for movement, but getting to know and support one another. I'm grateful to Lindsay for helping to create this opportunity for growth in my classes in the Politt library. Thank you for your time, Lisa May.
Pollin?
Also, do I have another 10 seconds? Um, as far as fundraising at the library, since Lindsay's been at the library, our fund balance has increased $38,467. That's the increase in just a few years that Lindsay's been there. So people are supporting the library when she's there and donating to the library.
Our board comments. I'm shocked and outraged how Lindsay was treated by the board. And I would like to know, has Lindsay had any kind of a meeting, what the grievances are? Has Lindsay, Lindsay had a review since she's been the librarian? I would like to know what the board has done to, to have her let go without any notice previously, any correction of what the board apparently didn't like. She had no chance to talk about it. She had no chance to hear about it. And I would like to know how it's been. And I can only echo whatever, what it also already has said in her favor.
Go ahead, Alan.
Um, yeah, I'd be glad to say that, um, people come in from outside. I'm an outsider, I have a form of shame and guilt. If people need time to learn things, years or, or months or whatever it is, uh, they should be given a chance to know what their weaknesses are and how they might strengthen them. But I do believe that we should select people on the basis of their strengths. And it sounds to me, from what I've heard, you know, just this evening, that she has tremendous strengths. So, um, what were the signals the board gave her regarding weaknesses? How did she respond to those signals? It's something that either, you know, residents here in Politt would like to know before all of a sudden my, uh, my librarian is dismissed. Well, thanks for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to add? Marty?
Yeah, as a follow-up, uh, one of the other speakers mentioned, uh, there appeared to be a personality conflict with Linda Welch. And I would just point out that when I was a member of the library board, she sent me one of the vilest letters I'd ever received simply because I had a difference of opinion with other members of the board. And I would not trust her for character judgment in this place. I don't know what went on, and there's no transparency in this whatsoever, which I think is, is very telling. No documentation. We, we have, you know, admittedly, there have been library board meetings that did not follow recognized procedure and rules in terms of noticing the public. And here we've got something going on where the public is not even being told, why has Lindsay been dismissed? Why has she been dismissed via email? An email. This is, this is her career. This is her job. This is beneath the dignity of a small town to do something like this. And I'm really shocked. I put in enough times, enough, enough years on the board myself to know it wasn't handled like that. No procedures were ever handled like that, and nobody was ever dismissed. And I can't understand this. So I don't think I'm going to get an explanation from the library board. However, you guys own the building. Maybe you should insist on a public hearing on this to see what went on. Because it is still a town library.
All right, thank you.
I'm Grace. Um, I'm on the board. And, excuse me, I agree that Lindsay was fantastic with programming. Um, the seed library is great. She's a lot of, has done a lot of great programming. And I don't, if there is a hearing, I'll definitely come to it. I don't want to get into the details right now, but I do think that, um, there was disconnect between sort of the programming and welcoming community members to use the library's resources. And I also do want to say that there were discussions that were had at meetings that were set up that were not attended. Yeah, oh, can I say one more thing briefly? There was, Lindsay correctly pointed out that one session meeting was not warranted correctly. So we, um, negated that and set up another one which was warranted correctly.
Anyone else? Lindsay?
Yes. Um, good evening. I'm Mr. Boucher. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce myself to the community. My name is Lindsay Barnes. I'm the former library director of the Politt library. I was notified by email that I had been dismissed from my position on Wednesday, November 8th, 2023, by the library board of trustees, without explanation, consideration, or due process. I'm a part of this community. I'm a resident of Politt. I'm a volunteer. I'm a volunteer. My children go to Meadowwee Community School. The manner in which the library board has managed this decision is unacceptable. And I wanted to, I made the decision to speak tonight because I wanted the citizens of Pollet to have the right to a full disclosure about the treatment that I received.
Excuse me, did you...
Please, no, please. You must adjust it, you must adjust me.
Sorry, sorry. Mr. Beecher, I believe that Lindsay Barnes didn't even attend the board meeting the night before where everything was discussed.
At the beginning of this, of this conversation, I said that this, these are two separate boards. So, this all needs to be handled in the library board. We've afforded you the time to speak. It's public, but that's all we can do at this level. Thank you all. Is there any more new business, uh, for the good of the company? Or, uh... That comes out of Robert's rules. Public comment?
I'd like to approach the town, Mike, in reference to a tax sale that was held back in June on a property in West Pollet. When I was at the last tax sale, Kevin O'Toole, the town attorney, said that an individual could approach the town board and purchase that tax sale at the town pot. As an individual, you, as a town, would receive the interest up to the date that I would take over that note. And I would like to be considered the individual to take over that note.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll be quite clear with you. I really don't understand that process.
Okay.
And, um, we, we could look into it certainly and, and try and figure that out and, uh, and move forward from there. If that's within the, the town guidelines, we'll have to talk to Kevin O'Toole and, and get that information. But if you put that up there, then we'll follow through with that and we'll try to have an answer for you at the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause I, I called his office and he gave me what the payout would be as of November 15th, and I brought a check for the town.
Okay.
So, but if we gotta wait two more weeks, that number's gonna change, so I can rewrite a different one.
Okay.
Julie, you have the tax collector and Kevin O'Toole can do what's in the best interest of the town and conduct the sale because it's a, it is a tax sale that Kim is responsible for.
Julie, you have information on that, or?
I'm imagining that I'm just gonna tell you what Bob just told you, but I did see Kevin that, the next day, and he explained to me that what he had to explain to Tom, which is basically like, we're, we're still within that one-year timeframe where the, um, original owners could redeem. Um, and so, it would just be like, you would just effectively collect only the interest on it and we would just be made, um, like, we would just transfer that bid essentially over to Tom. Tom would take over the bid and then would be the person that waits out the remainder of the year.
Okay. So, I guess what I wanted to do is a little bit of research and then we can come back at, at the next meeting and, and vote to do that as long as, as all, everything is, is in order with Kevin O'Toole, so.
So, would you like to get all of that in writing, the whole process between Kevin and Julie?
Yes.
And then we'll gather that information. The board will get it and then we'll be in touch as well and we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, please.
Sounds fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Would you have time to reach out to Kevin, Kristen, and ask that question so we can understand this process? It sounds, it sounds pretty straightforward, it's just nothing that I've ever encountered before.
Yeah.
Make sure that it's fully researched. Thank you. Anything else tonight?
All right. Um, I move that we enter executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees.
One second, Dave. Got a motion made and seconded to discuss labor relations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?